Of the Borough of Indiana Work Session to order. There's no, well, we need, there's no voting on the agenda. So I don't think we would need to call the roll for now. If something comes up later, then we can go back and do it. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
That's true. It's coming at the very end.
Okay, I, I think there is going to be a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, there may, there, there's a suggested motion.
Oh, okay.
You roll.
I know, I'm sorry.
I did.
I'm sorry. You guys went straight to the back and so it's a little anticlimactic.
What's the catch?
Sorry.
Regardless, entire packet.
I mean.
Rod.
Well, here. Well, Ford.
Present.
Rick.
Present.
Eric. Preston.
President.
Lancaster.
Here.
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 Fieldman. Taylor.
Present.
Eleven present, one absent.
All right. Now, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? For public comments, is there anyone who would like to address the council? We don't need an executive session as far as I know.
We're gonna.
The end.
To the end, yeah, let's, let's have one and move it to the end. I'm like channeling Nicole trying to remember, I know. Yeah, that's right, we talked about it three hours ago, my goodness, yes.
So this is, this is for legal. Okay, we usually move the exec session to the end if we're not going to come back and vote so that everybody else can go home.
Right.
Committee reports. Are there any administration?
Yeah, I've met, yeah.
We have met. Mostly, we talked about the comprehensive plan progress and it looks like it's going to need a little more time than we originally anticipated of September. So we're moving our timeline back and we're doing our best to get it done before the end of the year. But that doesn't even look that good. So, moving on from that, the third Thursday starts this Thursday, so that'll be nice, get out and take a look at that. And then the following Friday of next week is the Hawk Walk, which, you know, we hope to get some attendance there as well. Other than that, I can save everything else for the next week.
Fifty.
Thursday.
Quick. Hope it works.
That's elaborate.
Yeah. That's what he pointed to me.
Is there anything from Shadree?
We haven't met yet.
Yeah. Hey, you told me. Nicole.
I just want to remind everybody, April twenty second is the PA cleanup. We're partnering with IUP and we have some dumpsters being brought in. And we have from PennDOT donated gloves and bags. Lori has reached out to multiple businesses and organizations asking for some donations. So we're looking for volunteers to help that morning with area cleanups.
You allowed to share that on?
Yeah, we've been posting it, it was shared.
Okay.
Yeah.
I did send it privately.
Or is it, yeah. So that starts at eight AM at the IRMC Park. So eight to twelve is what we have on the.
Everybody knows what the weather is. It's April twenty seventh, it's not this week.
Twenty second, this week, it was Saturday, this Saturday.
That's this Saturday. You are right, sorry.
Well, oh, yeah.
Means I have to get my donation, you'd like from today.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I just want to put out there for admin, at the admin meeting on the twenty fifth, our auditors, Cots and CPA will be here reviewing the two thousand and twenty-two audits. So I know, I like to let the full council know if they'd like to attend, but that will be done at the admin meeting. So that's all I have.
I have a presentation to give. But if you'd like that to. Okay. Would you like me to do that on during my report or on your new business? All right, well, I'll gladly take this opportunity.
I believe down is to go to the next slide.
Members of council, thank you. I have, I'm honored and privileged, quite honestly, to be presenting to you today. You have in front of you the entire presentation in non-color. What I'd like you to do though, if you, if you can't see the screen as referred to that, if you can't see the screen, I'm hoping that the presentation is better in color. So. And has been talking about how we could enhance our Comfort Canine program. And we began talking to the Public Safety Committee about that same topic. And I broached that same topic with council very, very briefly at our last meeting. And some very exciting, a very exciting opportunity is upon us to embrace. And I'd like to just walk through a little bit of the background, history, and then at the end, if. I'm going to make a request. So thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm going to stand as I go through this, and if you have any questions at any time, I'll be happy, I'll be happy to answer. So, the Indiana Borough Police Department Comfort Canine Program, it was created to deliver the highest level of service in the area of comfort to our community. And as I believe everyone knows or has heard, we have Axel. And Axel's handler is Sergeant Jeffrey Hoag. And Axel and Sergeant Hoag are extremely active in our schools, building relationships, they're extremely active in our community, building relationships. And they are extremely active with our partners and our community members who are in need of comfort or victims of trauma. And so he is an integral part of the police department.
Axel, so you know, or so that we can all recall, is supported by our community for.
So the District Attorney, Blaze Veterinary Clinic, Tractor Supply of Indiana, Sheets, Lowe's, Mutts of Merit, PetSmart, and many, many community member donations help support Axel.
Here are just a few slides, and this is why it's far better in color than it is in non-color. But Axel is very active with the youth in the Indiana Borough. Axel is also very active with our donor population in the Indiana Borough. And he also entered a part. Two big police officers. Keeping our police officers. And we all, we all are dealing with stress and pressure. And Axel is one of them. And Axel is also, well, the Indiana Police Department, and I'm, I'm very proud of this, Axel and Sergeant Hoag have been recognized by the Western Pennsylvania US Attorney's Office for excellence in community policing. So we're certainly being recognized for the value of that program. That was a photo taken at the time of the Western District US Attorney and all of our partners. Every piece of.
Before I talk about the opportunity presented, I want to give a brief history of how this opportunity even presents itself. So.
For us, so we're going to see every expectation that we've had at the police department. He plugs into our schools, he plugs into our nursing homes, he plugs into, answers calls with us, he de-escalates stress, he builds positive relationships, he supports our officers, students at the, at the high school and beyond.
There's no question that he hasn't plugged in in the most positive way. The issue with the Comfort Canine program is that he can't fulfill all the requests and needs that are out there at this point in time. He can only work twelve hours a day and he has days off and he doesn't work nights and days at the same time. So what we found is that the need exceeds our ability. So I'd like to introduce everyone to Jimmy Rice. In nineteen ninety-five, Jimmy Rice was abducted from Florida, from his home in Florida. You can see he was abducted, raped, murdered by a sexual predator on his way home from school. Why am I bringing Jimmy Rice to your attention? Because Jimmy's parents, Dawn and Claudine Rice asserted that if there was a bloodhound available, because their scent is sixty times greater than that of, of. A German Shepherd or any other dog for that matter, that it could follow a human trail. And they believed that if it could follow a human trail, it would have been able to locate their son Jimmy Rice, because he was found nearby his home. But unfortunately, he was found deceased. There wasn't a rest made in this.
Some headlines from around the United States.
I just, what I did, I know I didn't cite this correctly, I apologize, please don't hold that against me or, or there's no intent for me to plagiarize anything. But these are some headlines, a quick Google search, Bloodhound Rescue. And a quick Google search, Google search. So in Tennessee, a headline is, and these are all from the past forty years or so, to present. Bloodhound helps find missing six-year-old girl who was allegedly abducted by her father. Police Bloodhound finds missing girl in woods during tropical storm Elsa. Bloodhound picks up missing child sent from over one point five miles away. And there's a new canine team with a bloodhound therapy on call, on duty, Martin County Sheriff's. And that's two dogs, one bloodhound. Martin County's in Florida, the other's in Tennessee, Tropical Storm Elsa, I believe, is in Florida as well. Jimmy Rice Center, as a result of the tragedy with Jimmy Rice, his parents founded the Jimmy Rice Center. The purpose of the Jimmy Rice Center is to provide AKC certified bloodhounds to police departments for the purpose of finding lost and abducted children. Jimmy Rice. We were in contact with the Jimmy Rice Center. And the Jimmy Rice Center then said, yes, we're, we would love to be a great partner, they learned about Axel. And they turned us to Bluegrass Bloodhounds. Bluegrass Bloodhounds is an organization, and I'll walk you through this, but this is the backstory. Bluegrass Bloodhounds was founded by a woman named Judy Braun. I have not met her, but members of the police department have been in contact with her several times. Bluegrass Bloodhounds came about based on Ms. Ray Miller. In two thousand and one, Ms. Miller wandered away from home, she wasn't found until ten years later in the woods near her house. And Judy Braun, at the time, was questioning Ms. Miller's disappearance. Why was there no ability for us to track where Ms. Miller was? So Judy Braun founded Bluegrass Bloodhounds, that trains AKC certified bloodhounds to track. Bluegrass Bloodhounds said, yes, we will absolutely. There's a great organization called AKC Reunite that we think we plug in. What? AKC Reunite works with AKC clubs around the United States, Dick D'Uffler, Brandon Rock, Canine, Canines. AKC Reunite. So AKC Reunite contacted the Philadelphia Kennel. And the Philadelphia Kennel Club gives grants to. These departments for this purpose, so all over the US. And so they, in combination with AKC reunites, adopt a cop, a canine cop program, and the Kennel Club of Philadelphia are granting, if we're willing to accept, Indiana Borough, ten thousand dollars. Ten thousand dollars is the complete cost of a trained five-month-old bloodhound that already comes trained from Kentucky in track. And that is his life to date is, or her vet bills to date, so very exciting. This, this.
Is that our dog?
This would be Indiana Borough. So we nominated two more communities, our community, combined under the ninety people. The Jimmy Rice Center are very beneficial. Bluegrass Bloodhounds is a big shield in the AKC Reunite in North Carolina, the Kennel Club of Philadelphia, and the WPA. And Sergeant Jeff Hoag, who spurred this entire project for us as he examined opportunities to expand our Comfort Canine program. They're all, they've all come together. Maybe he pays off. Sorry, at the top of this is a cut off. Same mission, this dog would have the same mission as Axel, the same mission in the Indiana Police Department, PFC Company, except it would have dual purpose. It comes to us as a tracking dog to find lost and missing people. And we are going to train it to be a therapy dog through the Alliance Therapy Dogs. So tracking, a bloodhound dog does one thing better than any creature on earth. Like then again, this is, my searches online, and I did cite him, I apologize, finds people who are lost and missing. And then therapy, what's said about bloodhounds are that their natural demeanor makes them a great service dog. If we acquire this resource, Indiana Borough Police Department, by the way, is using this as a resource countywide, and also read. To find lost and missing. Different call. So if any company can realize the good of our local partners and want to, let you know who it are. District Attorney Robert Manley is a pen pal to find out. We already have a police. Cage is very expensive. Cage and Rax is really expensive. To a tune of seven five three dollars plus. That's being provided to us by the District Attorney's Office. Police Veterinary Hospital was approached and they are willing to support a second canine for the purpose of our Comfort Canine Program. Tractor Supply of Indiana has agreed to provide food for both of our canines if we're going to embrace this program. Your support would be absolutely valuable in accepting this opportunity for an enhanced program. And PFC Michael Ploss has been selected through a process to be the handler of our second canine. And he would twenty-four hours a day be. His canines would be the house. So this is what we can have in Indiana Borough. Partners to provide the highest level of service to our community. And they're, both of these dogs, I truly believe, were born to enhance the quality of life in the Indiana Borough. There's no other, Axel came from a kill truck. He was days away from his life being ended. Today, he's impacted. Well, I'm going to go out on a limb, several hundred, several hundred people, they're probably never going to forget him. This, this dog, why I'm not referring to him by name, I'll tell you in a second. But this dog is, was born and raised to be a tracking dog for police. It just so happens that this is the dog that's available to Indiana Borough. So answers to questions that you haven't asked and haven't given up. We can have that dog in Indiana Borough next to you. Coffee. It does not yet have a name. Strategically, Bluegrass Bloodhound does not confine their dogs to a specific name because they recognize the police departments like the name of their dogs. So we in Indiana Borough would be slightly named. His daily mission would be comfort. And I want to stress, I hope that there's never a missing or lost child involved in this community. But if there is, he will be ready. But in all the other time that it's not, he's going to be trained as a canine good citizen, he's going to be trained as a therapy dog. And he's going to achieve that certification through the Alliance of Therapy Dogs. And every day, he will be on patrol, he will be in our schools, assisting victims of crime, he will be doing everything that Axel does as his. Yes, additional, additional community donations are always wanted and needed for the purpose of this program. Because one of the best, most enduring parts of this program to me, in addition to. To lead such a worthy effort is the fact that it's a true community, it's a true community program. So everybody who's been very kind to the program and we would like that to continue. A police bloodhound is not common to Western Pennsylvania. I can only find two locations that have a police bloodhound. One is South Fayette Township in Fayette County, I believe. And the other is Allegheny, thank you, and the other is the Mount Lebanon Police Department, also in Allegheny County. Bloodhound cross-trained as a therapy. Is a lot, is a lot. I know. The Miami-Dade Police Department, the area where the Jimmy Rice Center exists, has five bloodhounds, that's the Jimmy Rice Center. They have cross-training their bloodhounds, the five of them, to be therapy dogs in addition to. So we know that they can be. And that is the only looking, even in Martin County, I think that there's, I have a photo of two different dogs, one would be the tracking dog and one would be the canine. We would have two Comfort Canines. One would be ten years ago. So. Makes needed tomorrow's work. I request the council endorse to expand our third canine. By virtue of the vote, this brings out ten thousand dollars in grant funding from the AKC Reunite at the Kennel Club. And I sit here and you don't know who's going to be the operator, the exact champion, or the two chats to Indiana Borough. Because I don't have the money in hand today. Money's been guaranteed to Indiana Borough, and so what's, specifically the purpose for today can, can help. So it's more or less goal would be to take on a bloodhound, begin training our handler, because Mike Clausen will be the one really quick to train the dogs, all big dogs. Outfit a second boost vehicle, which we are working towards, we will continue to reduce the boost. Begin training as a canine good citizen and a therapy dog, and deploy daily as a member of the Indiana Borough Police. So my request is that we move to accept ten thousand dollars in grant funding to acquire an AKC bloodhound. Further develop the Indiana Borough Police Department Comfort Canine Program. As I.
Council member? Who would like to?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks. Good call, White. Please. Come on, if you're asking, and you are.
Quickly, well-prepared and think things through before you bring them to us, so I'm sure, you know, if you don't have the answer right away, you get it soon. When, when would the dog be considered fully trained?
So.
In therapy specifically?
Oh, in therapy?
Yeah, like when would you consider him? Now, dogs are never truly completely trained, you always have to refresh your training, all that stuff. But when would you consider him like?
So the first, first goal is canine good citizen. Canine good citizen is kind of the lower bar, the first standard.
Okay.
So canine good citizen, depending on, again, we haven't met this.
Sure.
So I would assume that under normal circumstances, if we're on a workday, various, if he's got a temperament that's. Doesn't need a whole lot of work around people, which again, we've been told that, that. Bloodhound is a great, is a great dog, I would assume maybe six months at most. And then for therapy dog certifications, a bit more grueling or aggressive, it has some different standards to it. We rely on our partners with the Alliance of Therapy Dogs, which is local. I would, I would say within eighteen months, full certification. But we would be using, we would be acclimating him to our community, just like we did with Axel, every day. We would just be keeping him out of circumstances where perhaps he wasn't prepared for. And that would be a decision based on the handler. But as far as the other training goes, we should leave, once we take ownership of him, we should have that first certification. The second certification for tracking would be an advanced certification, and that would require something a bit more, but we're prepared to do that, we betted that as well. A lot of it depends on the dog, did you have other questions before I take?
Dogs, I don't need to hold up the whole council to ask all of the questions that pop from my head. I think it's very exciting for everyone personally.
Um, so what impact will it have with having Patrolman Lawson now having a dog and not having, you know, not having the ability to not have a dog? How will that change his work and will it impact?
So police department, we opened, we opened up both of our programs, our initial Comfort Canine Program and this expansion opportunity. We first opened up the department to make sure that there was an interest out of it. Because we recognized with Axel that the wooden bedrock would have been a dog. Indiana Police Department and then Cage are created here at the police department when nobody is specifically tasked with his handling. So the family of Jeff and Natalie Hoag and their children with Axel said, this is what we want to do, we are going to commit to this program. And they've done an admirable job. So similarly, in January. Maybe even late December. We put out another call. We, we see an opportunity at some point in time to expand the Comfort Canine Program. Axel can't do it all, are there any other officers that are interested or willing in being a canine handler? And this was for a strict therapy dog. And we had more than one response. And through our process at the police department, we selected one of those responses, and that was Mike Clausen. So before Mike Clausen accepted and offered to become a handler, he and his wife, I've been told, I've had this conversation, that this will become, in theory, our. Responsibility twenty-four hours a day. And much like the Hoag family, the Clausen family stepped up and said, we understand. Something for the, for dog people that we're willing to do. And so the impact, I'm sure, is going to be significant, but we do have built in place by virtue of our community donations with Axel, opportunities where if the Clausens go on vacation or if the Hoags go on vacation, we have a contingency to house. Our own.
But I think I'm asking more about the impact it's going to have on Michael Clausen's, like he's not going to be able to do regular police work, Willie, because he'll have a pup with him. That's okay. Okay. Yeah, but I, I, because see, this one's going to be a puppy, I thought maybe it would be.
This is five months.
Okay.
This is considered a more mature.
Okay.
In our conversations with Jimmy Rice and Bluegrass Bloodhounds. Police Department, we had an option, I shouldn't say option, but we had a, we had a possibility. And for an opportunity, the opportunity was this, there is a puppy available that you can have and train. Or there is a dog that already has his first certification and we would be training your handler. And candidly, we left that decision up to the Clausen family because Mike Clausen's going to be the one that needs to do the training. And he asked that we pursue the dog with a level of training as opposed to the puppy. So that's what we would want to do. And that's what, that's what we have set in place. There's nothing from the police department standpoint that we have to have set in stone. But I will tell you, if you vote tonight, I have things in place so that this is going to be very easy tomorrow. So, so I haven't overextended us, but I have us to the point where. If you all. I have all my hope, this is going to be a successful. Modern, we're running. All the things great about Axel, but. If we're called upon to locate someone who's walked away from their house or someone with dementia or Alzheimer's disease who walks away, and we can get to that person, we're going to go, we're going to go immediately.
To remind people, two years ago, we had a missing child that was, unfortunately, deceased. A kid that was not communicative, autistic in White Township, and this would really enhance a situation like that.
I want to tell everybody and with our press partners, full attention, that if I could guarantee. Against the tragedy and strife would never strike Indiana Borough, I would do it in a heartbeat, but I cannot. I cannot guarantee that this dog will find the very first person that he's called to find. But I will tell you that with this bloodhound, we will be better positioned than we are today to join that hunt. And so whether it's Indiana Borough, whether it is our partners up north or partners down south, or in a tri-county radius, if someone calls and said, you have a resource that we think could be very helpful, we're going to go. And we're going to make it work. And Mike Clausen understands that as well. And not only has he, you know, I would say, and it's a strong, it's, it's not a strong word, it's a commitment. But these are people who have a passion for what they do, and they have a passion for opportunity and growth. And, you know, this is Axel's comfort, and I made no, I made no secret that that was Axel's mission. This dog's mission is safety and comfort, because it has a tracking mission. There's not a tracking dog for. There's not a tracking dog for the purpose of tricks. I want to make that very, very clear. I want everybody to approach our dogs across the board for only positive impact. And if someone's hesitant to walk over to a dog of ours because they feel that they're uncertain, or we're sending a mixed message by having two different police cars with two different types of dogs in it, I think that that would be reckless for our community. But that other means things aren't important for me. It just means that we have partner resources that we can leverage for that. Bloodhound, we, we can build our own, we can be again, our own resource to plug in for the police departments. You as councilmembers, and councilmembers in the past have given me an incredible opportunity to lead in non-traditional and intraditional. And I haven't taken that lightly at all. And although I have no certainty as to how this program works out, I will tell you all of my understanding of law enforcement and all of my understanding of the stresses that everybody's facing, we can make this program work, and we can again, and lead western Pennsylvania and beyond, if given the opportunity. And that's really what I'd love to do.
Dogs were tagged to say therapy dog?
Um, currently, our police cars say canine ask to pet, or police car says canine ask to pet. And Axel wears a, when he comes to duty, he wears a harness, and he wears a badge that says Axel. When he was in training, he had a patch that said, in training, across, I don't think we have one that says therapy dog. But he would certainly be deserving and worthy of wearing one that says therapy dog. This bloodhound will wear one, I'm not sure what he'll wear, because he's, he's out of training and he's into training, so we'll, we'll find out simultaneously.
It's just a question of the confusion, because a lot of folks come Indiana from a lot of other places, and like I said, not a lot of other places have therapy dogs, they usually like, like dogs that you, you don't want to be near, so.
These dogs bark, bite, surge, sniff, bawl, I mean, they all. They all, yeah, we'll be active, we'll be active in spreading. Back to all of, all of these work dogs, forces and much more. Our specific mission in Indiana Borough is de-escalating stress, building positive relationships, and finding missing people.
This sounds like a wonderful opportunity, wonderful program. What, are there any negatives to it? Is there something that you see that we should be aware of?
If tractor supply were to say we're no longer feeding the dog, Indiana Borough would have to feed the dog, or else the Shaw family or the Clausen family would have to incorporate that. If the veterinary clinic said, you know, we're not, we're not interested in that workload. Perhaps a cost.
Negative for Axel in any way?
Oh, well, Axel's not met as bloodhound, either, nobody has met him. What does it provide to give it to him? This is an actual picture of that, that would be the exact, that would be the exact one that would be here in Indiana.
The boy?
He, and again, not named.
So, how's that going to go, are you going to have like a little contest or?
So, my Police Department, as we rule out this program, and I want to let you know that, of course, if anything negative were to happen with this program, that would be me completely, that would be something that I would have to, that I would bear. But the success of the program is going to be supervised by Sergeant Jeffrey Hoag. And his supervision is going to be of Mike Clausen. As I stand here before you, I don't see, unless there's a specific incident, both of our dogs being on duty at the same time. Because I think strategically, if I'm saying that Axel has more needs than he can fulfill, that if I could keep a dog on duty every single day, which would be possible, perhaps not every day, but close to, we would do that. So, I would run them, we would schedule them opposite. But for a special event, for a, for a meet and greet, I'm sure there will be a getting to know each other period. That probably would be easier with a puppy. I'm kind of, we're all forced to fly blind in that aspect. But I'm hoping, and Axel's great around other animals that he encounters, and he's, when we brought Axel to the Police Department, he was, he was excited, I will tell you. I was, I was a bit nervous as chief, he was excited. But Jeff Hoag and Natalie Hoag, they did such an incredible job, I mean, and much of merit. And everywhere else that we had, upon order, helped us train a police out of Allegheny County. I mean, they're just such an upside. If you ask me, I'd be more comfortable giving you a more definitive answer if you said specifically, if this happens, what? So, you can determine what's negative? I think that there's always, you know. We do, so I.
I wasn't sure if there just had been other scenarios that we knew, okay, this is something that could typically happen, but there really isn't.
There is.
A negative that's been valuable to be seen.
Axel was, to my knowledge, I mean, I don't have her full history in the Indiana Borough Police Department section, but recent history, Axel's one of his companies. And regionally, he's one of the companies. And so, Bloodhound, we know in the county exists, would be a one of a company. And he'd be supporting partners from Jefferson County, and we could just draw a line. Anywhere that he could get, we could go support, if they wanted us. They don't always, perhaps they wouldn't know that we exist necessarily, but we'll try and make that public. But I'll quote Sergeant Hoag in a conversation that I had with him, he said, chief, have a little faith. So, I don't know what that means, but have a little faith, it'll be, it is going to work out for you. So, and that, that was his response to me trying to understand every detail before I presented it to you, so. We're, I'm, I'm as confident in this program as I am in bringing that kind of office. I have, I have not had this thought yet.
More questions, chief? Okay, well, now, this is a motion to accept money rather than to spend money.
I don't think you can do a roll call.
I don't think we need to have a roll call for this, thank you. So, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Post name? Motion carries.
I really have nothing to report in public session, we do need to have a very quick executive session, but otherwise, things are moving, moving along.
I don't have much to report. Outside of council meetings, I've been attending the Indiana County's Sustainable Economic Development Task Force, which is right now planning its next large meeting. So, involved with various cleanups that are happening. We're not just doing our cleanup in Indiana, this is actually a, a national thing, and I know that Evergreen Conservancy is doing one at Blue Springs Park, I think. Kyle has been chairing, and they're preparing for another rain barrel extravaganza at the Main Mart coming up soon. Other than that, I think I could all the committee meetings, and sometimes get a little overwhelmed, like last night, but that's what I have. Mr. Mayor?
I want to thank council for accepting the new comfort dog, I think it's going to be a nice addition, and now, looking forward to it.
Any old business come before us?
I have something I'd like to talk about for new business. So, I was, sorry, I'm trying to make sure I. Recently, we passed an event, permission to hold an event. And when I was at, when I asked what was going to happen during that event, there wasn't, you know, there was a brief general overview. And my, my concern is there's apparently another of a similar flavor event coming that's been, I don't think it's come through yet, but I talked to Nicole, and she said that the application had come in. And at that, at that specific, the second pride event, they're advertising a drag show. And in my personal opinion, I do not believe that a drag show belongs on Seventh Street in the middle of downtown. And a lot of people would agree with that sentiment, including some state representatives that are trying to create a law that drag shows would not be legal on public property. And so, it is a concern that I have with the other event, which is simply is one planned. And I don't think that there's a specific problem with the event. I just would like to know some of the more details of it, if this, to make sure that it's a of the specific, I'm conflating the word event, right? The event isn't the problem, it's what might have, might be planned at the event. That could be, I don't know this to be a fact, okay? But it could be, now we consider inappropriate to be on, on a public, in a public place in the middle of our town. No, well.
Caution of public safety.
And I just wanted to know if there was some way to verify whether or not that was part of what they had planned. And to see if that might be, just kind of get more information.
Which event? Was the first one?
It's a, it's a pride event, I don't, I don't, what are they called, Indiana Pride, I think is what the title was. I apologize, you weren't here last time.
I, I'm not sure, that's what I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, I believe it's the twenty-ninth, I believe, April twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Pride, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have my, I should have brought that application, but.
On the twenty-ninth or in June? Yeah.
Club, and by something called the rec room, rep room, I'm sorry, rep room.
See, we could say I'm talking about every event from now until forever, I think there's a few things that I think would make a higher level of comfort in approving any events.
Application, if we want to put on there no drag shows, you should make that motion.
When Twisted Jimmy's suggested they would like to do an event called the Back to School Bash, when they brought it to council, we asked them, okay, so what are you, what are you going to do there? Because we would like to help support it and advertise it, because people in the community are going to be like, hey, I got a stroller and a three-year-old, and eight-year-old, and nine-year-old, can I bring them to this event? What can we look forward to? So, when Twisted Jimmy's was asked these questions, he was like kind of wanting it to be more college-oriented, meaning really not bringing kids. But then it turned into, okay, well, I'll turn it to a kid event, and then all of a sudden, his staff and some people of the community are very excited about making it an event for young families as well, as opposed to more of a college drinking thing. So, I think what we're trying to say is, when an application comes in, just stating who you're targeting, like what kind of group are you trying to include, to attract, what events are going on?
Important for us to remember that what we're doing is we're closing a street. We are not actually deciding whether or not an event is appropriate for the town. If it's a lewd event, no, it's like, if you're saying it's some sort of lewd event, then yes, that's what we are doing. We're closing a street.
To give the permission.
Deciding who can and cannot close a street, that's when it gets into an issue.
Public space permits. You have to be content neutral. You can't, so if the Baptist preacher wants to hold a revival in the park, if a, you know.
The Pennsylvania Neon Azis want to have a.
Right.
Thing in the park.
The Wellsboro Baptist Church.
One, what I'm specifically was, was asking, and again, legality, maybe, maybe there's just, from that perspective, there's nothing you can do, I don't know, but.
And I understand what you're saying. The problem is, what happens when we say, or you say, no, we're not approving your permit? Oh, but we will approve your permit.
That is exactly what's being said.
It's not what I'm saying at all.
I feel like.
It's not.
You're an R movie, and you can take your little kids to this one and this one, but you don't. So, what I'm saying is, if you have a description of what your event entails, there are people that are going to decide not to go because they see something, or there's people that are going to love it and go especially. And that's all I'm saying is, on the permit, if they can say, these are the types of people, these are the types of events.
Publicize the events, the event organizers.
The community will ask about it, they already.
But they don't, but it's not our role to publicize the somebody else's event. Our job is to say yes.
So, how do we say yes, do we take a vet?
We will instruct the Public Works Department to put up the ballards, and we are going to close that street during this time.
And how do we, how do we, how do we approve that?
And we assure that if it's alcohol, there's security, and there's other places we have. You've been talking, I can talk, thank you.
I'm getting to different points in the, the topic that I brought up. Okay? Because I think, like she was alluding to, if on the application, they listed a demographic that they were targeting, I think that would be, what?
Turn to us closing this. Information helps votes. Education, information, statistics.
Great, I think it's important that if we say back to school bash, but we mean college students, that should be a piece of information that we know. All right, let me ask you a question. Are we allowed to say no if they wanted to, what's the word, they wanted to open carry? What is, I came from a phrase.
Open container.
Is that a thing that we're allowed to say no to? Right.
That prohibits open container.
Okay, so it's not exactly apples and apples. Yeah, that's fine.
That is, that's the question.
The point is, some.
Somebody that is up on the stage, and somebody takes off all their clothes and starts dancing around, that's illegal.
That is also.
Average, it is, it is circulated, no, I have never been to a drag show. I have seen many, many clips all over the news of what happens, at least some of them.
All over the place.
That's okay.
And didn't tell us the entertainment was a strip show. And then we had approved it, would we?
So, we don't have legal liability, do we have some level of moral obligation to vet adult content for kids?
When they take their little children and go, oh, I wish I hadn't done that.
Publicize on our event.
And strip their clothes off, that is illegal. The police should step in, I don't care who's running it, if it's the straight alliance, the pride li, I don't care. Yeah, I don't care if they are naked on the stage in a public, that's a crime. It's public exposure. Under the crimes code, they could be arrested. If they engage in a sex act in public, that's illegal.
Liability.
Public.
Thank you.
No.
Counter protest, and that person was assaulted, we are not liable for the assault. The assault is a crime, we, we didn't know that was going to happen.
But if they had planned in advance that they were going to do the assault, wouldn't that be nice to know before we facilitated it happening?
Nobody's ever going to put on their applications, hey, we're going to beat the hell out of some people today.
It's kind of a poor example, in this case, what I'm saying is knowing what the planned events would be, why do we even take applications if we don't care what's on them?
We.
Here's the reason you take an application. Here's the reason, all right, real, it's real simple. Number one, it's to make sure that the entity has insurance, so that the borough is not going to get sued if somebody trips, falls, gets hurt while using the park. Number two, it provides your Police Department, Fire, EMS, the ability to have a strategic plan.
Couldn't in that moment, what if something else is going on that interferes with it?
They would know the events going on, so they would have the resources available to make sure that, that's why the Public Safety Committee, that's one of the main reasons they vet the application, to make sure that they can ensure it's safe. No, you can never, you can never say never. I mean, you know.
Application is if there's no criteria that we'd ever say no.
Right, yeah.
It would be that we would say no.
Insurance.
Okay, that's it?
Well, no, I didn't want to interrupt speaking, but he said that they have insurance, and it's appropriate.
that they have insurance and it's appropriate of that. So if the event goes haywire, we know that for next time. But like folks have.
And they just go and try to have the event like, uh, that's not really a very safe way to make sure that somebody's accountable. What is a safe way to make sure that somebody's accountable to have a permit? That has, you need to have an organization that's going to pay insurance. And so folks that come in the door that actually can do an application.
There are fees.
There's a fee for it.
Dollars and then whatever um overtime or anything additional is then billed to the event organization.
So there's all sorts of reasons why we as a borough and particularly public safety and public works need to know when the event is happening and need to know some logistics of it.
What's happening?
Fast is how?
Breaking the law, you know, as long as it's on there.
What I was reiterating again is like with Twisted Jimmy's, if I see Back to Bash and I take my grandchildren and I find out it really wasn't for little kids, it would have been nice to know ahead of time.
That's Twisted Jimmy's responsibility.
Yes.
Hated to happen and as counsel who allowed it.
All we can do is put out the information that they provide for us and.
What they're doing at their event.
Not our jurisdiction.
And then we turn, and we turn something down because perhaps there are four events happening and this is the fourth one to ask. And our police force very reasonably tells us they cannot staff for events. And we've asked the question of what are you going to do? And we got it simply, but we, we're not basing it on that. We're simply basing it on a very reasonable public safety and staffing. Someone can say, well, you turned us down because of X and, and you, and you don't want.
Hang on, I understand his point though.
My point is, but my point is as soon as we turn somebody down after we've asked, it doesn't matter why we turned them down. The perception will be we turned them down because of.
As long as it's legal. All I know is the community has a right to know what is being presented to them on community property.
Two separate points. I would like a better description on the application for the sake of knowing what is happening.
So I have a question. Chief, when you bring us those applications and we have either approve, and I've never disapproved of one, but if somebody didn't fill out what the event was, if they said like none of your business or left it blank, would you bring us that application or do you only bring us applications that are ready to move forward and be an actual event that we close off the street for? Okay.
They're very, they're very, they're very levels of professional approach to filling out an application. For instance, downtown Indiana does an excellent job of being very complete with their applications. Other events, and I won't name them, but other events, regardless of what we're t- talking about, other events that we've had have been much less organized. And in those events, they require more cost because the police department's preparing for kind of like what the unknown-ish might be. But we could, the special event application, what questions get asked on a special event application is up to this council. As a, as your chief of police, what I do and what I did is patient from really any source, some, the manager, sometimes he has me them, people come in and hand me them. And then I take a cursory look at them. And if I have follow-up questions, which I do generally, I would reach out to the name and phone number on the application and talk them through it so that I know what to present at public safety. There are times where I'm not quite sure if council is going to have questions or not about an event. So I invite the special, the person who wants the, have the application to come speak to public safety. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. So it's, then it's been councils. It's, it's public safety's choice whether to bring it forward. As the specific event, the first event that we approved, that's Indiana Pride, the event that we've approved. I did have conversation, both, uh, I did have conversation with that organization or the, the sponsor prior to bringing in it to council, but it did not go through public safety. I don't recall because again, the time. So council was in my professional opinion, council was far more restrictive as to how many special events were approved and what the, what was allowed at the special event, I mean alcoholic beverage wise, and so you know, that's, that's a council decision. I'm just trying to, from my perspective, the reason it comes to public safety historically, from what I've been told, and I can speak from since two thousand nineteen is because if it goes to the manager and she approves it, or she takes it to the admin committee where the police department isn't, there may be a public safety concern with that event. And so I think that it just kind of heads things off to bring it to public safety first, so that I have an opportunity to say this event is not, I have concern of whether I can sufficiently protect a gathering that's supposed to have thirty thousand people at it with your police department. And then I would hope that they would say, at public safety, that's not something that we're going to bring forward uh to council. I can tell you that there have been foot races that have been requested in Indiana borough and a bicycle race that's been requested, that's never reached full council because um it's been dismissed at the public safety level and at my level because I can't, we can't close enough intersections to have a bike race be safe. It just can't happen. Say, it's always a safe thing, yeah. So um but as far as the application goes, the application that I accept could be structured any way that this council wants. I don't, I don't ask specific questions per se uh on that application. Tell us what, what your event is. They never really turn out to be exactly what they're said to be anyway, which is just a complexity of our job. But if we're going to have a concert, if we're going to have a uh concert, a very famous person come into town. And I knew that it was a very famous person coming into town. The likelihood of that event being very well attended by revelers, let's say, is a higher likelihood. So I would plan for that. I will tell you that because you referenced the um because you referenced the second pride event, which hasn't yet come to public safety. That application is very detailed. It wasn't detailed because I asked it to be detailed. I haven't even discussed it with anybody. Um, and apparently, uh, I haven't discussed it. It has, it's coming Thursday, the public safety. But it's, it's very detailed. And so the question would be, can I protect it adequately? And that's, that's really what the public safety um committee does from my perspective as chief.
I can suggest, I mean, so we have had a lot of conversations about this application and about whether or not we can sort of ban events we like or do not like. And so rather than go in and try and change this process right now, why don't, why don't, why don't we see, I mean, I.
I heard about descriptive and transparency.
Been from happening.
Not sure if we need to like this up. I, 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 I think staff level does a pretty good job of uh, of, of working out what the event is going to be, like, I'm not. I, I, I just seems like it's a lot of work to sort of open up the special event application and try to again, work this through when it, it seems like we have a pretty good process right now. We've got a pretty smart folks.
Something that came up. I'm not specifically trying to redo the event that was already approved for the record. I, somebody sent me the Facebook post from the next event and thinking it was the first event. And I remember, I, I, when I saw it, I didn't realize at the time that it was the next event. And on it was different things than what he read on the application. And so what popped into my head was, were they trying to mislead us in what they were doing? And again, at the time, now, and if it's a, what's up? It sounds like not, it was a different event, but I didn't know it when I thought that, right? And so the question, that's where sort of the, the crux of the question came from. And it's not just these events, it's any event going forward. The back to school bash, there was questions, we didn't have a lot of information. There's, I, I don't know if I specifically did, but I remember there was a vote to table it to get more information. Timeline didn't really let it happen. It got voted not to table it and then the guy canceled it. So this is not the first time this style of question has come up. And I don't remember anyone telling me last time, we're not allowed to care. What is happening?
And are we, are we making content-based decisions, which puts us into, I think, legal jeopardy and some issues with first amendment rights?
Might be the way, isn't that, okay, okay then. But I guess I wonder why we have to approve an event.
Because we need to look at like, like Daryl said, insurance, security, safety issues. That's why after three years of a successful event, we no longer see the event and have to approve it because it's already proven to be successful. These are responsible organizers.
But okay, okay, this is good now. Okay. Coming in and closing down the park on their own.
Mostly because Gaddy Pharmacy was there and they requested us not to close um the street as often. Is that perhaps?
Past two years has been more active than the past few. Yes, but I don't know the reason.
Like the ballards. Um, so we've made it easier to close it because we like to encourage community events and especially during COVID when we were outside, we actually participate in organizing their Thursdays. So we encourage community events.
My second question is, as a council, do we have some sort of obligation to our constituents to let them know that perhaps a G-rated event is not going on downtown that is open to all of our citizens? Do we have some sort of moral obligation to state that this is different, have been more request that these types of events perhaps happen at a different time of day? I'm not, I'm not saying we should close anything, but just do we have a responsibility to the people?
It wouldn't be up to us to rate it. What it is, is to present what is going to take place.
I don't think we have that.
Organizers have that responsibility and, and it's like anything else in the world. Look, if to an event and I don't like the event, I'm leaving.
Not inside like a theater with the door shut. You know, that's, that's my only question because this is a public forum and we are allowing.
Sometimes it's too late. Some of us really actually care about our children and the content.
Sure, everyone here does.
We all do. I didn't refer to anybody in particular.
There are some people just have a difference.
Different events we don't want to be involved with.
Difference, there are different things that different folks are willing to expose thing, their children do. I get it. That's, that's not, we're never going to solve that issue. But as a council, as a governmental entity, you cannot bar certain speech. And once we start putting in certain things and it may never happen, but if you deny someone billion public safety reasons. But you say, I was denied because of A, B, or C.
That wasn't G-rated or it wasn't Pride G-rated, so it wasn't R-rated. So.
Should be for every event. I have an announcement I've wanted it. No, it's not the organization.
Who say no to the public, um, gosh, you just said it and I already forgot what it was.
Open container.
Open container waiver. In what context would you be allowed to say no to that? So, so then legally then, when, in what context will be allowed to say no to it?
Now, to open container issues. I believe. Needs to control the space, like and limit the space. That's a reason we could say no.
Okay.
It's higher, right? There's higher insurance, there's more, you know, things that they have to do, designated areas.
Does it strictly go back to the insurance then?
Well, I mean, the, the, the issue is you have an ordinance that says you can't walk around with an open can of beer or open bottle of beer or alcohol. It's, it's, it's a law.
Allowing on our streets.
Event Oktoberfest, okay? Obviously, you're going to have open alcohol sales at Oktoberfest. If not, why? Why are we having it?
No sales.
Yeah, not sales, but you understand my point. You're going to have, doesn't have to be sales. You're going to have open containers.
But that's on private property. That's, that one's held on private property.
Wait, Tammy? So when they, when they come through council and they're approved, if it's approved for open container, that's stated. If the, the event name is usually stated when they're approved. So we, we approve them in the same way and we announce them in the same way. And then the, the proponents of the event advertise this is X event and there will be alcohol. Um, but, but that the end there will be alcohol is part of, is the same as this, this event, right? So you know, the back, the back to school bash is like, is a good example because back to school bash run by a bar, we should all be like, oh yeah, it's probably going to, but, but we didn't because there's, there's a, there's another thing in town called the back to school bash, right? So that's a, that's a kind of an odd jargon-y, like local lingo sort of confusion that was caused by that one. But in general, when they're, when they're presented, like if you don't want to go to a pride event, you don't go to the pride event. If you don't want to go to a rally in particular persuasion, you don't go to that. And, and so they're, they're advertised by the people who want people to come, but in the same way that warns off the people who don't want to come. Um, and so that's, that, I mean, we've never actually, I don't, in my knowledge, had really any problems with the current system.
I, I don't think, for the record, that every single person that might go to a pride event wants to go to a drag show. I don't think those are mutually exclusive.
But the drag, the drag show will probably, it'll, I haven't, I, this is all, I'm completely just in the abstract here. But my guess is if a drag, drag shows are a draw to a lot of folks. Um, and so my guess is they're not going to sneak the drag show in on people. It's going to be a headline event on the flyer. And so it's not, it's not going to be a surprise.
What you're implying is if people don't want to go and they know about the event, they would know that that's taking place. Well, that's a fair point.
Right.
They, they can make their choice with their, with their people that.
There, there's the historical context on this and council is we, we did four or five years ago, there was an active uh effort to make it easier for people to have events downtown. And right, and so more events. And so, and so we've done a lot of these things, including uh revamp the special events and, and give, I think, staff some more autonomy and sort of, you know, figuring out what, what makes sense and what doesn't. I don't think we have denied a alcohol, open container request because we not, I there's never one in the council that I've seen because we have not been presented with any that have been, you know, at best, right? If a high school group comes up and is like, hey, we'd like the special event container too. We will, that, that's not going to get to us, right? Um, Shaw's going to be like, I'm going to call you up, um, and it won't get to us. And so, so if, but if we, we could have a problem, like it's kind of an exciting thing because that, it was, it was like, hey, are we going to get more people to have events? And now we get all these events and people are complaining about all the events. And so it's kind of an exciting things that have happened. People want to be downtown. Maybe we got to revamp it, maybe there's going to be like this, this Saturday. I don't know if you guys know, there, there were like nineteen things happening in town. I can't believe there aren't conflicts. I don't know if there's been any conflicts for IMC Park rentals yet, um, but there could be. And then, you know, maybe it's just a timing thing, um, and maybe we got to revamp it, but it's like, it's, you know, having too many events is a good problem. People want to hang out.
And again, if it's a free speech, if it simply is a matter of the free speech thing, then it is what it is. I would like to point out, and some people may or may not know this, that this particular topic is, had been presented to the Pennsylvania legislature by two different bills to make drag shows in public illegal. I can't remember if I said that, but it is actively a bill that is working its way through government.
It's never happened, so you know. We also were told there's a bill to let us, the boroughs have a stormwater fee, but that's never happened either.
Don't kind of legislate it to be helpful at all.
I'm, I'm far from the only person who doesn't think that drag shows are appropriate on, on downtown Indiana, so.
Yeah, I mean, there could be a common protest to that, so.
Every event is inherently unsafe. Every large gathering, we, I don't want to, I don't want to promote events and counter events and counter events and events.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Strike that from the record.
People were upset that we allowed alcohol, but there hasn't really been any issues with it. Yeah, before, before we did it, but afterwards.
To serve alcohol on the sidewalk. But since then.
And there, and for my, and I, I think I asked you time, we haven't, I don't, don't think there have been any events where there have been open container and pretty big events, pretty rocking events where there have been like, oh my gosh, everybody was hammered. Like there, there have not been um significant issues that you guys couldn't handle. Oh, I wish you could just say yes, but.
Again, I, I just want to walk out of this conversation with full council, understanding that the police department, the content that we are understanding is for a public safety purpose and that's it. So I've never, I've never brought anything to say. I don't, my concern isn't public safety related. If there is a public safety concern with the event, any event moving forward, you'll hear it from me. But you have a great police department and we can handle a lot of things also, even things that we don't want to handle, which is ninety-five percent of the things that we do. So, um, but we, you know, police content, but if I felt that we couldn't protect an event by what I know, to your point, should we know more? More is always better for me to know more. But the reality of the special event situation, Indiana borough sometimes are that you get. But the reality of the special event situation in Indiana borough sometimes are that you get first time event people that really need more help than they have current knowledge. So you're kind of. Then it just becomes policing the event for unlawful activity. Hey, you know, you said that your event was going to take place in I R M C park. Now you're in the middle of seventh and Philadelphia street. This is a problem. Get that event back into the park. I have turned away events or, you know, they've always. Right. But sometimes, uh, special event requests will be, well, I'd like to have open container and I'd like for the open container to, I'd like to serve alcohol in I R M C park. And then allow people to walk down the street. Well, if you're not going to close the, the street they're walking down, I can't waive open container for that street. So when you're going to close, because of the event that you initially want to have, it's either going to not happen or you're going to alter your event so that it conforms with what traditionally would happen. So, look, NAF's a good example. NAF's coming up. NAF is trying to expand their event. It's, they're trying to expand. And, um, So public safety concern slash questions that I have to get my head around. If you're going to close this street, what's the impact of traffic elsewhere? Do I have enough officers that can host a, you know, a headline band on a Friday night based on everything else that we have going on? Um, so, and I'll do the same with every single event that comes around, but council guides what they want asked on a special event application. And if I have follow-up questions that I need to ask as the chief, I'll ask them independent of council to the event organizer. And much like the bicycle races and some of the foot races that have been asked, I've said right away to public safety, this isn't something we should be approving. Not necessarily this public safety committee, but past public safety committees. Because, you know, for instance, a bicycle race starting in white township and ending in Indiana. How many intersections do I have to close? All the bikes aren't going to come through at the same time. If it's a 10 mile race, so how long are we going to wait? What's going to be the? Had this happened to us at a, at a foot race that was in conjunction with the It's a Wonderful Life Christmas Festival. And, um, moving away from that point, I said, I, I will never be a proponent of a foot race at a special event because not only do we have roads closed for the special event, but now we have roads closed for the road closed. So again, police department. The content is for us to understand how to prepare for it, not specifically what to approve. And, um, the special event application gets the content of the special event application can be anything Indiana borough wants it to be. And I'll, I will adhere to that stringently if you'd like. I think that one thing that has been done in the past, but we've tried to compensate for that a little bit is you know, there are, there are set times that you have to have an application in. For instance, uh, eight weeks is how much time I have to get penned on to approve a road closure application. There are events that try to get in under that eight week mark and we have work to try to get the, that going. But we certainly could be more restrictive and say, no, you missed that. It says eight weeks, you're seven weeks and two days and not. I mean, that.
Through that lens in public safety, correct? I am a recapper in my brain. It's how my brain works. Bear with me real quick. Pat, just for clarity, what we're saying is the consensus of this event is considered protected by free speech, correct? Personally feel that free speech trumps my dislike of what may happen. Okay. So for the record, I very firmly believe that. Not for me anyway. I'm. Have this. There's be some closure and if there's not going to be a motion. Then is there anything else to come up for new business? Then I'm going to ask that we adjourn into a work, into an executive session. Have to ask public to leave. So that we can do this. And this is for, uh, legal personnel matters. Legal personnel matters.